The meeting of the South Hundred and Regional Board of Education has called a word. Adequate notice as required by the Open Public Meetings Act was provided on December the sixth, two thousand and twenty-three by posting the notice with the respective clerks of the City of Lammerville, Borough of Stockton, and Township of West Amwell, and advertised in the Hunterdon County Democrat and the Trenton Times newspaper. I'd ask everybody to stand for the flag.
United States of America, to the Republic which stands for my nation, under God, indivisible, and with liberty and justice for all.
Mr. Harris, please.
Here.
Martin Dennis.
Here.
Yep.
Here.
In a Pochetti, Frank Keys, Kevin Popovich, like a scratch.
Here.
Megan Morden.
Here.
Johnny Todd Moreno.
And Gallo.
Here. Good evening, welcome. We have a, you see, we have a presentation on the agenda, excited to see the ballet students here this evening. Mr. Cruz, you want to say a few words?
Yeah, so I'm going to actually introduce Principal King Jonas, who will introduce our performers.
Good evening. Good evening, on behalf of Lamberville Public School, it is my pleasure to introduce to you Roxy Ballet. But before they begin, thank you to the Organization of Young Audiences and the LPSPTA for supporting and funding the Roxy Ballet to work with their second grade students. And I want everyone here to know and understand that ballet is more than just movement. We have learned such things that pertain to culture and confidence and self-esteem. So I could not be more proud of our second grade team. I would also like to thank our outstanding second grade team, Ms. Kenny and Ms. Carducci. Take it away, Roxy.
So what we're going to do is fade out to your audience, and what you're going to do is present your solo that you created, okay, using those powerful words that describe who you are, so that you can show the audience how you can communicate with your body and let them know how amazing you are. Oh, I'll put some music on. Let's figure this out. Do you think, can I dance with you? That's impressive. Yeah, that might be a good one. Our pose. And ready, tramp. Go to your partner. Find her if you're prepared. Take her. Go. So much for your support. And while you all kind of like, maybe a lot of second graders with a lot of feeling, I think over the course of the twelve weeks, twelfth Friday, I was with them, they were able just to learn a lot about the art of dance, how they can use their body as a way to communicate, to share. We went and we took the theme as being community. So they had to go and create movement based upon who they are. They had to create a duet, which you did with Kaito, about your family and sharing. And then at the end, them and their family, how they show up in a community and what a community is. And do you want to share some of the words? Because I think this is very powerful. What were some of the words that you chose about your community?
Together.
Togetherness?
Caring.
Caring.
Helpful.
Helpful. What else was your community? Remember anything else? What? Together. Are we brave because of that? Yeah. All right, so thank you just so much, and thank you, well, school board, for recognizing that dance is a very viable part of a child's education.
Tara Jarboe. I think one of the, I think, and she danced in Roxy.
Tara Seymour.
Yes.
Yes. That's why Tara's.
Even little.
Yes. Well, he was, well, yeah, Stephen and Matt were probably pretty close, dude. Yeah. Yeah.
It's Tara.
Good evening, everyone. It's an honor and a privilege to present to the Board of Education for recognition our two thousand and twenty-three, two thousand and twenty-four class of retirees. Each retiree has demonstrated excellence in incredible work ethic, dedication, and professionalism during their career in the South Hundred and Regional School District. They've done an outstanding job supporting and servicing students, staff, parents, and our community. I'm going to ask my administrators to come up and say a few words about each one of our retirees, and then I'm going to ask our retirees to come up, make their way around, shake hands with the board, and then we have a little gift for you here before you leave. Not all of our retirees could attend this evening, but we are going to acknowledge each and every one of them by saying a few words. So we'll start out first with Mr. Miller from West Amwell.
Good evening. The West Amwell is very proud and honored to present to our retirees. And I went in alphabetical order, so you could fight with yourselves about the order later. First, we have Chris Carbone. Chris Carbone's career at West Amwell School has had a permanent positive impact on so many Wildcats. In her thirty years, Chris has held many different titles, has led countless projects, and has always been a resource for our staff. She received the honor of Governor's Educator of the Year in the two thousand and fifteen, two thousand and sixteen school year. In my years as principal, Chris has always been a helpful collaborator and a wealth of knowledge. I will miss our talks together, both professional and personal, and all the great stories you have always shared about your students. On behalf of our entire school community, I would like to wish you all the best with retirement. Next, we have Beth Sargent. Beth has always been a professional with an unwavering commitment to her students and colleagues. She has been a model for high student expectations during all of her twenty-eight years at West Amwell School. Beth received the honor of Governor's Educator of the Year in two thousand and nine, two thousand and ten school year. She has been a great mentor to many sixth-grade colleagues and has left a mark on so many staff and students. I will always remember all the sixth-grade fun we had together, museum hopping in Washington, D.C., surprise visitors at the Monument Tour, and all of the sixth-grade promotions. Beth, on behalf of myself and our entire school, I wish you all the best in retirement. Finally, Carol Williamson, who's still at school, see you tomorrow. Carol has been an exemplary paraprofessional at West Amwell School for the past twenty-seven years. Carol, like the other two, has received the honor of Governor's Educational Professional of the Year in the two thousand and sixteen, two thousand and seventeen school year. Her enthusiasm and creativity are evident in her ability to engage with her students. Carol has also been an asset to our school community as a leader and collaborator with other West Amwell teachers and paraprofessionals. She never hesitates to lend a hand, join a group, or guide new staff. I am grateful for your willingness and enthusiasm in taking on some of our most challenging roles. Your successes with our students are unparalleled. On behalf of our school, myself, and our entire school community, I too wish you the best in retirement.
Next, our Director of People's Services, Dr. James Naismith.
Good evening, everyone. We want to wish Ms. Julie Aspin a great and restful retirement. We congratulate Ms. Julie Aspin on her retirement in December, two thousand and twenty-three. She has a junk on some of you right now. Julie was a dedicated and valued staff member of the South Hundred and Regional School District. For thirty-five years, Julie developed and then shared her expertise as a teacher, coach, and learning disabilities teacher consultant. Julie was also a leader for her peers and a willing mentor to staff who are new to the profession. We wish Ms. Aspin success in her retirement and all of her future endeavors as she continues to share her vast experiences with various organizations.
Next, Principal McKnight.
Good night.
Heather Damron is an exceptional educator whose passion for teaching and commitment to student success has greatly impacted our school community. Throughout her nineteen-year tenure at South Hundred and High School, Heather has consistently demonstrated an unparalleled commitment to fostering intellectual curiosity and creativity amongst her students. Her passion for the English language is notable, igniting a love for learning and self-expression in every classroom interaction. I've personally had the pleasure of working alongside Heather for fifteen years, and throughout this time, I've witnessed firsthand her dedication and innovative approach to teaching. She possesses a deep understanding of the English language and literature, and has a remarkable ability to inspire students to explore, analyze, and appreciate the power of words. Heather is not only a skilled instructor, but also a compassionate mentor who invests time and effort in nurturing the holistic development of each student. She actively listens to students' concerns, offers guidance and support, and celebrates their achievements, instilling confidence and self-belief in their abilities. She is known for her unwavering support and mentorship, always going above and beyond to ensure the success and well-being of her students. Heather has dedicated countless hours making South Hundred an a special place to learn. She has been the advisor to our school newspaper, Thespian Club, GSA, and Drama Club, to name a few. She brought us the Bell Jar Project, The Great Gatsby, and The Day of Silence. Years of students remember their shoebox project where Heather got to know what was important to each of her students and their lives. She exemplifies the qualities of an outstanding educator: passion, expertise, empathy, and dedication. Her impact on students extends far beyond the confines of the classroom, shaping young minds and inspiring a love of learning that will last a lifetime. Heather will be dearly missed here at South Hundred. I wish her well in retirement.
Next, from LPS, Principal King Jonas.
Good evening again. Unfortunately, all of my professionals weren't unable to make it, but they certainly, I'm sure, wanted to be here. Some are already enjoying their retirement. Ms. Sasmann. Ms. Sasmann was a paraprofessional that always brought passion to her work. She absolutely loved themes. Pick a theme, and she was there, she would go big. She would always make special events even more special for all of her students. Ms. Sasmann has a warm heart, and she was always willing to help wherever it was needed. We wish her happiness and relaxation. Ms. Tomlinson. Ms. Tomlinson is happily still with us and will be with us for the last day of school. Again, it's unfortunate she was unable to attend. Ms. Tomlinson has many years in education, over thirty. With us at South, it has been about fifteen years, and Ms. Tomlinson has been absolutely amazing. She is a strong paraprofessional who is always student-centered. She has made such an impact on not just the students, but the colleagues in which she works. She will absolutely be missed. We wish her again happiness and relaxation. Ms. Dumaz. Ms. Dumaz is a teacher of special education. Ms. Dumaz has always had a learning focus on all students that really encompassed creativity. Ms. Dumaz brought creativity to everything at LPS. She continues to be with us and will be until the last day of school, bringing all that she can think of our way. I am confident that whatever adventure is in store for Ms. Dumaz, it will include freedom of expression and creativity. There is no stopping Ms. Dumaz. We wish her happiness and relaxation. Thank you.
And then we have our business administrator, Mr. Harris.
I'm here to congratulate George Hutton. Unfortunately, George could not be here tonight, but regardless, the district would still like to express our gratitude for his hard work, service, and dedication over the past ten-plus years to South Hundred and Regional. In those ten-plus years, he has overseen countless projects, large and small. His leadership and commitment have greatly contributed to the smooth operation and continuous improvement of our facilities. Through his efforts, he created a safe, efficient, and welcoming environment for everyone in the organization. His expertise and institutional knowledge have been invaluable to us. As he moves into retirement, know that his impact and efforts will not be forgotten. We wish George a fulfilling and joyful retirement. Our retirees want to make their way out into the hallway, maybe we can get a group shot out there?
Why don't we just have a five-minute recess? Remember, we can talk.
Five-minute recess, we can get a picture back here. But it'll be great.
What?
So hopefully we can get together.
Yeah, absolutely.
Yeah, whatever, I mean, even if it's not like summer, summer, we're around. It's been a busy year with France. Yeah. Yeah, hopefully we can continue to have fun next year. I actually have an idea. All right, looking forward to working with you. Thank you for coming today. Excellent. Excellent. It is. Is there a new LAF?
Um.
I can sort of, yeah.
And are we calling it something else? Are we going to, is the name changing?
I don't think so. Not what I need to tell me yet, but it is.
Something for them to consider.
Yeah. Yeah. South Hundred, yeah. We'll talk around. Good idea.
Chief.
Yeah, everybody was there. What's that? We got three minutes, two minutes, seven thirty.
Senior cut day.
Well, I heard my son told me it's singing.
Why would she come to a meeting?
I said, I'm singing. He said, he said, no, it is. I'll pretend I didn't hear you.
Okay, fine. I kept with you here.
I kept with you. Thought of it, he wasn't, I said, he won't be driving anywhere till the rest of the week. There you are. He's missing up school time. Skip it then.
Exactly.
Good night. Thank you. Congratulations. Sleep in. All right. So we'll, 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 we're, thank you very much. Good night, guys. Thank you. We will resume our, resume our meeting. Or this, we were just discussing up here apparently today, the senior skip day. And it is beautiful outside, so it's hard to blame a seventeen- or eighteen-year-old for not showing up to a school board meeting. So we will not have a student representative report this evening. So we do have dedicated PTO folk and PTA folk who are here, so I will ask a question. Oh, yes, I'm sorry. Before we, there was one, one teacher who was not here tonight, who is retiring and leaving our district, is Ms. Bogdan, who was a teacher here at the high school, phenomenal teacher here at the high school. And Ms. McKnight is going to say a few words about.
So I'd like to say that I've also worked with Kim Bogdan for the past fifteen years. And I was very happy for her as she moved on, as her husband received a job in Texas, and she decided to retire here from South Hunterden. So as I'm very happy for her, I was very sad to see her go. She was the epitome of the power of patience and understanding with her students. She never gave up on any of her students. She always had a way to figure it out or to reach a student, to explain it a little different. And her time was always dedicated to, to, to her students and making sure that they felt supported, successful, and heard. She was a class advisor for many years and instilled the love of Disney amongst all of her students. Any senior class where Mrs. Bogdan was the advisor, they all knew that she was an extreme fan of Disney and knew that going to Disney with Ms. Bogdan would be the experience of a lifetime for them. She is sorely missed. However, in the hallways, students still ask, you know, or say things that Mrs. Bogdan would say because she was always rational. She was always understanding and had a way of compromising with students so that they felt valued and their opinions in the classroom. I've never met somebody that had such a passion for history and a way of explaining it to somebody who, you know, you know, would put things together, but she would, she would be able to explain it in a way that made it fun and made you want to learn more. Organization as well. I learned even co-teaching with Mrs. Bogdan throughout the years, different organizational tools that I still use today, in which she instills on our stu-, she instilled here of our students in South Hunterden. So I hope she's doing well in, in Texas. She's dearly missed and, but we wish her well in retirement. Thank you.
Thank you, Mrs. McKnight. So with that, it's the PTA, PTO update.
This is, I'm Jessica Harding, and I'm going to read the LPS PTAs. Their Walkathon has just wrapped up and it raised a little over three thousand dollars. They want to congratulate the kindergarten for raising the most overall. It's pretty exciting. The PTA will provide that grade with an ice cream party. Future Appreciation Week was a success. Thank you to the LPS parents for providing snacks. The PTA sponsored a breakfast from Panera and a lunch from Tribe. Field Day is scheduled for next Friday, May thirty-first, at Briarwood Day Camp. And then on to the West Ham Mall. Our Mega Fifty-Fifty just wrapped up. Also, we raised four thousand five hundred and sixty dollars, and our winner won two thousand two hundred and eighty dollars. It's not as much as we did last year, but it's a pretty good chunk of change. As I said, our Mega Fifty-Fifty ended on Friday, May tenth, and the winning ticket was pulled by four of our top-selling students. Our winner was Nicole Claus from Lambertville, who used to be a school board member, so that's pretty exciting. We have really scaled back our fundraising efforts. We rely really heavily on the Mega Fifty-Fifty and our Kids Night Out event, so we really appreciate everyone who supported those events. Teacher Appreciation Week was a huge success. We did a breakfast, a sound bath, a snack day, and a luncheon on Friday, cooked by our amazing committee. Thank you to everyone who donated items to, and thank you to my committee who worked so hard all week. It's a lot, and they did a great job. We also worked with the LPS PTA to organize a snack day and a luncheon at the middle school, high school. So thank you to everyone who donated items to that. Was greatly appreciated. Our next Kid Night, Kids Night Out event is Friday, June seventh, from six-thirty to nine PM in the multipurpose room. And then this Wednesday, we have another reorg meeting at six-thirty PM at Lambertville on location on May twenty-second. So if you're interested in the future of the PTO and what it's going to look like, we really want people to come. We want to hear what you have to say. And we'd also like, if it's possible, for maybe some administrators to get together and give us an idea what your expectations are, because we're so used to the events that we're used to sponsoring and things that were past, and we just would like to know like what the future holds for, for the PTO and what we would be responsible for moving forward. Our Field Day is June twelfth with a rain date of June fourteenth, and save the date for our end-of-the-year foam dance party. It's going to be in the front parking lot at West Ham Mall, June fourteenth from six to seven-thirty. And then, we never have a June meeting, but we have so much going on in June that we weren't able to have our fiscal meeting in May. So we are going to hold a PTO member meeting June third in the library at West Ham Mall, and that's all. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, George.
Hi, my name's Megan Sinkus, and I'm here on behalf of the LEF. So just a few updates for you. There are some changes to the executive board beginning in September. Janelle and Wendy will be stepping back from their president and vice president positions. Myself, I am be stepping up for the president position. Kate Merzinski will be taking on the vice president position. We have some big shoes to fill, but we're excited. Both Kim and Tom will be staying on to kind of keep some continuity. And so, you know, we're looking forward to exciting twenty-twenty-four as we step into these roles. Secondly, we love hearing from the students from all the grant awards. Most recently, we heard from them on the Hamilton trip. So keep those things coming, keep the grants coming, keep the feedback coming. We love hearing it. We try to, you know, advertise that when we can. So glad they're enjoying it, and we love the, we love the feedback. Next, we have completed our review of the senior and summer awards, and we will be presenting those in a few weeks. And then lastly, we are, planning is underway for Golf Day this year in the fall. The tentative dates are scheduled for September twenty-ninth and September thirtieth. That's it.
Congratulations on your new position. Good luck. Okay. Let's see, with that, we go to correspondence. This month, we did receive one letter, which is posted with the agenda online. So we will move to approval of minutes. I need a motion to approve the regular minutes and the executive minutes of our April twenty-ninth board meeting. But moved by Ronnie, thank you. Did I have a second, please?
Second.
Second, by Megan. Any discussion on the minutes? None, all in favor? Anyone opposed? We have two, we have a, we have a special report this evening. Actually, I'll let Mr. Sutter or let Jane Ellen introduce the report.
Sure. So if you recall, we've been doing program reviews over the last several years. This year, we did a program review with our Gifted and Talented Program, and we partnered for that review with Public Consulting Group, or we call PCG. They had done our special education review as well in the past. So what we're going to do is, we're going to have PCG come up and do an overview of their findings and recommendations of the G and T program review. And then after complete, they're completed, I'm going to have Mrs. Lanning come up and just talk a little bit about next steps for us, planning based on those recommendations and findings for twenty-four, twenty-five. So at this time, I'll have Rob and Maria come up. You can do your own formal introduction and give a little bit of background. And I'll be pulling up their slide deck for the presentation.
Excellent. Good evening, everyone, members of the board, South Hunterden leadership and staff. What an exciting night to be here. Thank you for having us. So many of you are familiar faces, which is really exciting for us. As Tony mentioned, our team had an opportunity to work with South Hunterden last year on the comprehensive review of the special education programming here in the district. And then we had the opportunity to come back and conduct another comprehensive review this year, but on the enrichment program, also known as the Gifted, K to twelve Gifted and Talented Program Evaluation. My name is Dr. Maria Yulik, and I am a senior advisor at Public Consulting Group. I've been there for three years with the firm and specialize in conducting comprehensive and targeted reviews of programming around the country, as well as providing implementation support for districts. So that can include action planning, project management, and facilitation of different special education initiatives. And I'll introduce my colleague, Rob.
Good evening. Robert Trent Malin. I am a senior associate with Public Consulting Group. I've been with them just one year, because prior to that, I retired as the director of Special Education for Denver Public Schools. And as soon as I retired, they pulled me right back in again to be the director of Gifted and Talented Education. As well, too, I typically work in the Science of Learning and Literacy Division, doing professional learning around the country on the science of reading. And so I'm on loan to this team because of my background in Gifted and Talented Education.
Thank you, Rob. And so I have my laptop up here with me this evening because we do have the full report. So any questions that you may have, feel free to interject throughout the presentation, but we also have built-in time at the end of our presentation to answer any questions that anyone may have. Excellent. So a quick agenda overview. Rob and I had an opportunity to introduce ourselves. We'll also provide you an overview of our project. We'll review the findings as well as recommendations and answer questions. We also know that Jane Ellen is going to come up and share some of the next steps for action planning and implementation of the, of the recommendations. As part of this engagement, PCG created twelve, a series of six research questions. And so, thank you. There we go. Perfect. Thank you. We'll read those out to you as they're presented right now. But the way that these, these questions were designed is we wanted to target six key areas in the research and literature base for gifted and talented programming to ensure that not only was the review comprehensive in terms of the breadth, but that we created enough depth in the questions to be able to gather the data both quantitatively and qualitatively to ensure we have a full understanding of the practices here in South Hunterden. So question one, to what extent are best practices followed to identify and evaluate all gifted and talented students in K to twelve in South Hunterden Regional School District? Question two, what are the identification rates of identified students disaggregated by race, gender, second language learning, and disability? To what extent do staff staffing ratios support fidelity of gifted and talented enrichment programming? To what extent are professional development opportunities made available to support staff in gifted and talented programming to ensure fidelity of best practices? To what extent do current service models, curricular, and instructional strategies support gifted and talented student strengths and interests and their academic, developmental, and social-emotional needs? And question six, what specific procedures are utilized to promote family engagement efforts to support inclusion, equity, and access to ensure all families of gifted and talented learners are knowledgeable about opportunities for their students? So the initial draft of these questions was provided in the scope of work. And prior to finalizing the questions, we worked in partnership with Jane Ellen and Julie to ensure that we revise these, and they're reflective of their, of the district's vision, as well as what is best in the literature. We wanted to provide an overview of our research methodology approach. If you had an opportunity to see some of our work previously in this comprehensive special education review, you'll know that the firm does deploy what's recognized as a mixed methods research design study. And so in the graphic within, you'll see that we prioritize collecting both quantitative and qualitative data in order to analyze all of the different components of programming. And so for this study, when we conducted the data document request, we were provided a series of demographic data, and so that included the number of all the students who are currently enrolled in enrichment programming from grade three through grade eight. Within that data, we were able to disaggregate that by school, race, ethnicity, disability status, second language learner status, as well as performance on different measure, on a different measure for entrance into the enrichment programming. And so that really gave us an opportunity to look from a quantitative analysis to answer some of those research questions. We also deployed a qualitative research approach. That included a series of focus groups, which we'll talk a little bit more about in interviews, as well as, we met with students this time, which was very exciting. We did not do that in the comprehensive special education review, but we did do that for this review, which we can talk more about, and we're happy to answer questions, but that was a really thrilling opportunity. In addition to that, we gathered survey data for the qualitative approach and then analyzed any existing documents within the district. And so an overview of our data collection activities, a total of fifteen focus groups and interviews were held, and that included members of the board, parents, South Hunterden staff, and students. We held focus groups with students who are enrolled in enrichment programming at both elementary schools, as well as in the middle school, so students in grades seven and eight. In order for students to participate, parent consent was gathered prior to the opportunity, and this teacher did stand in the room, who was present throughout. They observed the questions and answers. We didn't know if students would be a little hesitant to speak to us, but Rob hopping, that was not the case. I was surprised. I was like furiously taking notes, and Rob's like asking questions, and they filled up the entire forty-five-minute window, which was fantastic.
It was a good indication that these are very precocious students who had a very strong opinion about their education, so it was exciting.
I agree. And what was also very neat is we actually deployed student engagement as well through the stakeholder survey. We had a series of surveys disseminated. Sixty-nine students in grades three through eight completed the stakeholder survey. Thirty-five parents completed a survey, and forty-three staff. Each of the survey questions were designed specifically for the subgroup. So students who were in elementary programming and enrichment had a series of questions that were similar to great students in grade seven and eight, but were more age-appropriate, developmentally appropriate to answer. And then grade seven and eight had a series of questions. All were in alignment. They were just more fine-tuned for developmental appropriateness. And then parents had a series of questions that were answered that were in key domains. And then stakeholder staff survey had as a series of questions that were also in similar key domains. We did create an opportunity where everyone who completed the survey answered in a Likert-type scale, but there were also open-ended narrative questions that you could elect to complete. They were not required, but you could complete narrative, open-ended questions. And we, and we did not gather any student information or parent or staff information. So it was anonymous completion, which we always do. But the narratives were actually very insightful as well, too, in terms of the findings and recommendations. We found that students in particular really have a strong vision in terms of what they want, and we tried to articulate that in the body of the report as well, too, and we're happy to answer any questions. Rob and I had an opportunity this fall to come and visit South Hunterden enrichment programming in one elementary and one high, and one middle school class. Due to the nature and the structure of the program, we know Ms. Kubiak is at one elementary school on day A, one elementary school on day B. And so on the day that we were here, we saw her at Lambertville Public Elementary School, or LPS. And then, again, a data and document request, a series of documents related to structure, resource allocation, district procedures, et cetera, were included in the analysis of data collection. We wanted to provide you a high-level overview of survey respondents by subgroup. So you'll see that fifty-one students in grades three through six completed the survey, a total of eighteen students in grades seven through eight. As I mentioned previously, thirty-five students have parents in the enrichment program, forty-three student, forty-three staff members in South Hunterden for a total of one hundred and forty-seven surveys completed. And then when we look in the pie chart to see the breakdown of staff, we'll see that approximately fifty-nine percent of those who completed surveys were general educators. Approximately ten percent were specials or elective teachers, as well as fourteen percent identified as other school-based staff members. And then a relatively small percentage of three percent school-building administrators, but given the number of school-building administrators, that makes sense. It's relative in comparison. Seven percent of student support services and three percent of ELL teachers. And I'll transition over to Rob for the findings.
All right. So we looked at a number of different categories with which to organize these findings, and you'll find them listed here. The first thing we look- Here, the first thing we looked at was the overview and the general vision of gifted and talented programming. Within the school district. The very first thing is we have to commend the school district. For really putting a spotlight and energy on a population of students that are often overlooked. Across the country. There is no federal law. Providing guidance for serving students who are gifted and talented. It is really up to each one of the states. Historically, New Jersey has not provided. A very strong guidance until recently when they passed a law about three years ago on. Improving services for students who are gifted and talented. So thank you very much. There is a reason why many states have identified. It as a mandate to provide social emotional support services for students who are gifted and talented. Research shows that students who are truly gifted and talented. Do have a tendency for an inclination towards mental health issues. Primarily caused by the fact that they did not receive interventions at an earlier age to better understand. Who they are and why they are a different learner or a different thinker. And why they need those additional supports out there. When we think about exceptional students, we think about that classic bell curve and two standard deviations below the mean. Is oftentimes where we find our, our students who have disabilities. Who are then receiving specially designed instruction for. To support them with their disability. Two standard deviations above the mean is also way outside of the norm. And oftentimes these kids come in with a cognitive ability that is so precocious and so advanced to their peers. And oftentimes don't understand why they are different than their peers. And therefore requiring those additional support services, or they will struggle with finding success in their adulthood. In a couple of recommendations that we looked at within South Hunterton Regional School District. Was what is the vision for our programming for students who are gifted and talented? And at that current state, there was no clear vision. And it was also very clear at this point. That many of the stakeholders were even sure what the definition is of a gifted. Student or a student who is gifted and talented. And we went back to the New Jersey law to really look at. How is South Hunterton Regional School District meeting the criteria within the law? And did discover that there are some board policies that the board may want to take up. In order to be compliant with the law, but also provide a vision. For gifted and talented programming for this district so that. Superintendent, chief academic officer and teachers have some guidance with moving those forward as well too. Then if you look generally overall, where the percentage of students who are enrolled by enrichment and. Grade, this gives you an overview of where you're going to find these students. You'll notice between the two elementary schools, there's a pretty equal distribution. Of that population of students. And then you'll also note the numbers there at the middle school and high school level. So what percentage of students really should qualify for gifted and talented programming? Again, we're going to look to special education. It's often ten to fifteen percent of the population. That same thing will apply for gifted and talented. Anywhere between ten to fifteen percent of the population. The national standard to qualify for gifted and talented programming. Is some sort of level of performance or cognitive ability at the ninety fifth percentile or higher. And then another ten percent or another five percent of those students performing at the ninetieth. Percentile to the ninety fifth percentile are what we would classify as students in a talent pool that show potential. But they need to be provided with experience in order to grow from that potential. And eventually move into that gifted and talented category. And then our students who perform at the ninety ninth percentile would be categorized as highly gifted and talented students. That oftentimes requires a vastly different set of programming and support systems for them as well too. We will look at identification practices, right? This is how we first find out who are our students who are gifted and talented. In our findings, we find that South Hunterton Regional School District is following. And using the industry standards for identifying students who are gifted and talented in one category. There are actually over eight categories of gifted and talented, much like in special education, you have thirteen disabling conditions. Which could range from a learning disability to a low incidence disability, social, emotional, intellectual disability. Within the area of gifted and talented, the one general category that South Hunterton really focuses in on is general intellect. But other categories include giftedness in quantitative reasoning or mathematics. Giftedness in language arts, giftedness in science, giftedness in social studies. And then we also look to the arts and physical movement. So those are other categories and for area of performing arts like music, dance. Music, both orchestral and vocal performance. Creative arts and then also physical education or what we call motor. Psychomotor skill development. And then other categories also include leadership. Within there. So one of our clear findings is that South Hunterton Regional School District uses the industry standard tools. Such as the Cogat and the Renzulli Hartman scales. But those are tools that are really designed to identify just the general intellect. Categories. We could not find that there was strong evidence to screen or look for students who are gifted and talented in those other. Categories that are out there as well too. And so part of some of our recommendations is to expand that eligibility criteria to actually. Go out and look for students in multiple categories outside of that general intellect. And then to bring together a team of people to then go and evaluate that body of evidence. To determine if the child truly is gifted. That team should include one member who can read psychometric measures such as a school psychologist. Possibly a school counselor or a. A diagnostician that knows how to read those tools, understand percentile rankings. And some of the limitations of some of that measurement as well too. As well as those individuals who have a degree or advanced background and gifted and talented education. And then also thinking about bringing in representatives from some of our other populations that are often overlooked. One of the areas that I have a particular interest in is twice exceptionality. These are students who qualify. For services under the Individuals with Disability Education Act. And or a section five oh four of the rehabilitation act and are gifted and talented. Currently, at this time, South Hunterton Regional School District does not have. An identified twice exceptional student on their roster for students. What happens is oftentimes the disability is masked by the giftedness or the giftedness is masked by the disability. One area that we find a lot of students who have twice exceptionalities are students who have dyslexia. Something that occurs within the brain that kind of fires some amazing gifts on one side. But because they can't read those words on that sheet of paper, they often get overlooked. For their potential area of giftedness as well too. And in addition to that, we will want to take a look at our second language learners, our emergent bilinguals. The, the measures that we often use can sometimes be biased towards a student whose English is not their first language. And then that could lead to under identification of second language learners who are gifted and talented. And currently, South Hunterton Regional School District does not have a student classified as a second language learner and is also gifted and talented. So those would be two areas that we want to bring in some of those specialists into that identification team. To maybe make referrals to some of their population of students that they feel are very precocious. And then the other area that we really want to make sure that we have representation of is our specials teachers, our. Music teachers, our arts teachers and our physical education teachers. We're also making certain recommendations of students who may be precocious in those areas as well. Then the other age old question is how do we serve these students who are gifted and talented? And one of the first things I'd like to say is. You're not gifted and talented two hours a week. You're gifted and talented seven days a week, twenty four hours. A day. And so how can we think about how to serve students all day long? In every single classroom who are gifted and talented. So one of the things that we would challenge South Hunterton Regional School District to think about is. A variety of different service models that may be able to address all of these students' needs. One teacher who is gifted and talented cannot necessarily serve your students who have general intellectual reasoning, quantitative reasoning. Arts or leadership or other types of gifts. So we can actually come together as an entire district and serve this population of students. Through some very strong understanding of what is gifted and talented, some professional development. And the adoption of practices such as called universal design for learning. Universal design practices are what works for our students who are gifted, what works for our second language learners, what works for our students with disabilities? Guess what? That works for all students out there as well too. And so one of the service models that I would challenge the district to do some research on. And to review is called a cluster grouping model. This is a model that. I adopted in a very small regional school district that I worked for in Colorado as well too. What, one of the things that we do know and one of the things that your students made very, very clear. Was they needed to spend time with each other. They needed to spend time with. Peers who have that same amount of intellectual reasoning that is there. Research shows that inclusionary practice is the best for everybody, but two populations of students. One, students who are deaf and hard of hearing that only use sign language as their form of communication. That inclusion is actually exclusion. And then the other is our highly gifted and talented students. They need to find time during the day. Where they can be with like peers in order to go through some of those challenges, either through. Opportunities to learn about social, emotional needs and to find others that are like me, but also to have those intellectual challenges. What a cluster grouping model does is it's a creative way of placing students within a classroom where there is a cluster of gifted and talented students. But there's also a cluster of special education students. And maybe a cluster of other populations of students. And what this does is it reduces the load on the teacher to have to differentiate. For many, many different groups within the classroom. You know, a teacher might have thirty students, they try to differentiate for thirty. Now we're differentiating for three different distinct groups. Which makes it much easier for planning and much easier for delivery of instruction. Commonly, we are told, well, isn't that tracking and isn't tracking something we shouldn't do? No, we still want a very diverse classroom, which is why we have equal amounts of students with disabilities and students who are gifted. Another model that we would challenge you to think about is a school wide enrichment model. Enrichment is something that supports everybody. And through multi tiered systems of support and the continual layers of support. We have identified children who actually need extra support. And an enrichment model allows them during one period of the day to be able to go and dive deep into that area of support that they need. This would allow your students who have incredible creative arts to maybe come together and spend extra time with the art teacher. Or it may also allow your students who may be struggling with learning word level reading. Such as dyslexia to be able to come together and through fun, engaging ways improve their reading ability as well too. So those would be two service models that we would highly recommend. And of course, that comes with a good amount of professional development. Now, one of the things that we really talked about in the education of children is something called wraparound services. Wraparound services is much like a triangle. Where you have the family, the community and the school. And when the family, community and school can all come together to wrap around a student. We see achievement that grows by leaps and bounds. And so part of this is to make sure that we are engaging our family. Community to one, understand what is giftedness, what is the process to identify giftedness. And have them be a partner in developing goals and working for students. Just like we do for our students with disabilities as we develop an IEP. So the New Jersey state law doesn't say you have to develop an advanced learning plan, but it does say you need to document. What are the goals of that student and to be able to work towards those goals. And of course. That's going to be much stronger when we involve the parents and the community in that process as well too. As a matter of fact, one of the strong evidence based models for students who are gifted and talented is a mentorship program. Looking to the community, find who are those mentors that excel in their area of strength. And partnering those up with students and finding an opportunity for them. To grow and learn from each other as well too. And given a very robust and diverse community, especially in the area of the arts that you have within here. I think you probably have lots of opportunities and as evident this morning, you partnered obviously. With an artistic organization to provide services for your students as well too. And then of course, systems and structures, everything is going to be made much stronger when we put those systems and structures. In place, you have a very clear committed staff. And beloved staff members from both parents and students. That was made very clear in our focus group. Areas as well too. And so one of the things we challenge you to think about is I think you need more than just one. Teacher who specializes in gifted and talented at the elementary level. Perhaps they consider an additional FTE, particularly now that you will have some changes within your. School structure without having two separate elementaries as well too. So then having one at one school, one at the other school, and then those support services at the secondary. School as well too. And then you want to utilize that staff as a part of your evaluation team. But also as an opportunity to deliver professional learning because we're the experts. In that area so that they can support the entire district in that professional development as well. Is this me? That's you. All right.
On our version of the slides, we have our names down at the bottom. So thank goodness we remember these. In terms of our recommendations roadmap, this may look familiar. We are adopting the same procedures following. Our special education comprehensive review as well as in this gifted and talented comprehensive review. You'll see as we walk through these recommendations, when Jane Ellen comes up to present, she's going to dig a little bit deeper in terms of how. South Hundred and is going to be addressing these at a high level. But it's important to know that PCG, our scope and contract actually includes two additional action planning sessions with Tony, Jane Ellen. As well as the rest of the leadership team that they'd like to designate to participate in this process. And so we have not yet held those action planning sessions, but that's really where we put all of our heads together and say. What do you want to prioritize? How do we want to prioritize it? Let's take a step back and from a ten thousand foot. Lens, figure out what other initiatives are going on. And we know there is a lot of moving parts right now in South Hundred and, and so we want to be super strategic. And how we embed some of these other opportunities to improve gifted and talented programming or enrichment. While we're still working on some of those special education initiatives from last year and ELL initiatives and overall learning growth. And so again. I'm sure Tony and Jane Ellen will lean into the board as well for your participation and feedback, thinking through some of these different opportunities. But we want to recognize that it takes at least three to five years for full implementation. Once the districts and their leadership have identified the priorities for the recommendations. Not everything we recommend may resonate with the district and that's okay. But we do recognize that in our partnership together, we want to close the loop and hand this over to our district partners. So they are well prepared to implement the spirit of the recommendations that are most recognized. And so as Rob mentioned, creating a vision that's going to serve as the anchor for the district. We want all of our district team members, all of our district leadership, our parents and even our students to know. What is gifted and talented or enrichment programming? How did I get here? What ways do I get here? And that digs into the identification practices as well. But we want to streamline identification practices to ensure that whatever is identified as the key tools. That are recommended across that expanded number of domains. So beyond just general intellect. Quantitative reasoning, language arts, leadership, physical motor. We not only expand the tools, but we adhere with fidelity. To ensuring that the students who truly fit within that five to ten percent of the student population or up to fifteen percent of the student population. Are funneled into the gifted and talented programming. Right now. In seventh through eighth grade, approximately eighteen percent, so no, I'm sorry. Thirty four percent of seventh and eighth graders here in South Hundred and have qualified for gifted and talented programming. Approximately thirty percent of. Approximately thirty percent of the student population in grades two through six at Lambertville have qualified for gifted and talented programming. And approximately eighteen percent of students in grade three through eight at West Amwell have qualified for gifted and talented programming. And so while those procedures are in place, we want to ensure that we're identifying the correct bucket of students to ensure that those services are implemented appropriately and with fidelity. And then when we're thinking about those service models, I know that Tony and Jane Ellen have already begun thinking through opportunities for enrichment specifically to be embedded throughout the day. But more importantly, with our partnership, thinking through how can we explore either cluster grouping or embedded instructional opportunities throughout the day.
And then also, within that process, really look at your families and your stakeholders. And how do we increase that family stakeholder engagement through a number of ways? And then, of course, developing your systems and structures so that this is sustainable. So that if Tony is not here and Jane Ellen is not here, the program still continues flawlessly without any interruption as well.
Excellent. And so we will just identify a few of these steps and then we'll turn it over to Jane Ellen. This is the, actually, no, I apologize, we can jump into our questions, perhaps, and then turn it over to Jane Ellen. Okay, great. And so where we are right now, in the action planning process, we'll work with Tony and Jane Ellen to identify the initiatives that are most important. So let's look at those recommendations and think through what do you want to prioritize now? What do you want to prioritize in a few years? And we'll develop those into a tracking system with key performance indicators. And so that's really taking a look at, as I said, the other initiatives that are in the district and then thinking about what KPIs can be tracked and whether you're using a current system to do that. We can utilize that system or help develop a metric in order to track those and then ensure that those are communicated, those objectives, as well as identifying a status and review outcome process. And so ensuring that the district has a way with fidelity to go back and say, six months ago, we said we were going to do this, this is where we stand. This is how we're going to continue to move forward. And then, of course, recognizing we adjust as needed. Things happen with, as I mentioned, there's a lot of change, you all know that better than anyone. And we want to ensure that there's the flexibility and the spirit of the recommendations are adhered to, understanding the given changes in the community. And so we are happy to answer any questions you may have. And I'm going to log back in my computer in case we need to answer anything from the body of the report.
This is Martha Dennis. Just a quick question, I think I'm understanding that at the moment we're over identifying. Do I have that right?
Correct.
Okay. And do we know, do we know how that occurred if we're using the, we're using the two tests that were identified? Are we setting our threshold too low or do we know what the, how we got there?
Instead of reaching the ninetieth or ninety-fifth percentile, we said the seventy-fifth. The reason being to give them a chance because we didn't know when that might come again. And also because our pop where, okay, this, I'm sorry, because our population spent at LPS, but also to a degree at West Amwell, are far more common to Trenton than any other place. The thought was to err on the side of hope, of almost whatever. Anyway, that was why.
Thank you.
Did we apply the same seventy-five percent at West Amwell and Lambertville? Because there's, there's a big difference.
Yeah.
Yeah. It's interesting, I'm just wondering, you know, same tests.
That actually can be very peculiar to one year. When you're in a district as small as this, if you happen to just have a class, you know, at one place that has just a lot of kids, that's the way it works. It's also been in the many years I've been doing this, has also been the other way, too, like to whether be far more in West Amwell as opposed to Lambertville. But then again, that can change on a yearly basis.
So that what we're looking at in this is a point in time sort of data point, not a trend?
Yes.
I think just as a general, you know, we've talked about this for the years, right? Because we're actually, our cohorts are so small. If you're only identifying five percent of the kids that's gifted and talented, and you only have, you know, twenty or thirty or forty kids on a grade level, you're talking about, you know, a handful of kids. We kind of made, I think, as a district, we've known this for many years. We've made that decision because you wouldn't have a significant enough cohort to have any kind of a gifted and talented program if you did not expand the parameters a little bit in order to include a few, you know, a few more of the kids. That's, you know, that's kind of, I think, the reason that we did things that way.
Absolutely. And we put in the body of the report, and we would like to note here that by no means are we advocating streamlining the number of students that are in there right now. Students take great pride in being in the enrichment program. Parents take great pride in their students being in enrichment program. And South Hunterden staff love having children in the enrichment program. It would not be the appropriate course of action to withdraw a student who may have a lower COGAT score at the time that it was administered, which could theoretically be two to three years ago from the enrichment program. That's, we are absolutely not advocating for that at all. I think that'd be detrimental to the well-being of students. Our recommendation is more streamlining moving forward in the sense of having a strong eligibility decision-making team. And then really, to your point, Mr. Gallagher, like looking at that whole cohort and saying like, hypothetically, we have fifty second graders now. If we were to apply the stringent ten to fifteen percent window of eligibility, that would leave us with three students based upon the portfolio of data. So then we may want to open it up to the top twenty percent of students. And then what would that window look like? But utilizing a strong structure and system in terms of an eligibility decision-making team, documenting that, and then thinking through, what are the policies for remaining in the enrichment program? I know right now there is a current expectation that if you're not performing at a certain grade level, that you could be removed from enrichment programming. If that's no longer appropriate, remove that expectation and just think about how to continue to support students to remain academically engaged and perform in the classroom as well as benefiting from the enrichment-type programming.
And if I also might add, keep in mind you're really only identifying one type of gifted and talented student. And that is a student who has general intellectual reasoning. Your numbers may stay the same, but now we might be qualifying students in other categories that are not measured by that COGAT there as well, too. And for some of the students that perhaps are not performing at that ninety percent of the COGAT, somebody saw something there. So now we might be wanting to dig in a little bit more with the data to find out exactly where that area is so that we can match up the programming to best meet those students' needs. I think there was, you know, some note of one particular student that scored at the fortieth percentile on the COGAT, you know, which is well below the ninetieth percentile threshold. But chances are on the Ranzilli scale, somebody saw something in there. It could be an area of leadership that's not going to be measured by the COGAT. So that requires digging deeper into that area as well, too, which is only going to be better for your students across the board because now we can identify the specific strength that they have. And then the other thing I'd like to also point out, you know, at one point, I had to hire tutors for my high school students who were gifted in an advanced placement. So high academic achievement is not an indication of giftedness. As a matter of fact, one of the categories I'd recommend for us to look for is those children who have a lot of behavioral issues and a lot of office referrals. Oftentimes, behavior is a form of communication. And if they're not being challenged, that may be one way that they communicate with the teachers as well, too. To kind of keep that in mind. And also, you know, really understanding what is the difference between a high achiever and a student who is truly gifted is going to be another important piece, I think, for the team to really explore and understand and provide some professional development on as well.
I just wanted, and you can answer this briefly because there's probably a lot more to it than what you would want to go in now. But looking at other areas where kids might be gifted or excel, like science, and easier ones might be science, social studies, language. But, you know, art, music, dance, how is that measured? I mean, I wonder if the reason why COGAT or this other scale that's used, which I don't really know that much about, are relied upon is because there's some sense of objectivity to it as opposed to, you know, whether or not a third grader is a good artist or a good dancer. I, you know, it's a little bit more subjective and so I'm assuming there's a way for
I'm going to talk a little bit about the identity process as we, as we move to looking at different gifted abilities.
Thank you.
But there are tools out there that will support that. So the Ranzilli scale actually is a broad one that looks at all categories. But it's filled out by a teacher and a parent. Sometimes a student fills it out. And then you identify those areas that seem to be strong by outside observers. And then you can go to alternative times of assessment instead of a standardized assessment, but maybe a rubric. Oftentimes in the arts, we look to, you know, musical performance. You've had jazz combos that go off and do a competition. Well, who are the students that are scoring the highest in those juried performances? Or artistic artwork that is then submitted to a jury or a portfolio that has been submitted to show those tendencies? And you have an expert in that area, like an art teacher and an art community member that then goes through all the artwork that has been submitted to say, yes, this child understands color theory or this child, without being taught, or this child understands, you know, how to use pointillism to bring the color together to make a painting pop or something like that. Or this is a child that showed potential. If they receive that additional amount of instruction, I bet we will see them rise to that level of a gifted and talented student. Yeah.
And to answer your question as well, Ms. Fischetti, we had an opportunity to speak with students, as I mentioned, for the focus groups, but also in their narrative responses for the survey. We asked questions such as, pick out of the, of this list, what are the best ways that you learn? And you could, students could say, when I have a chance to read directions, when I have a chance to decide what the directions would be, when I have a chance to use my hands and I have a chance to use my body. And then also in narrative responses, they got to, they had the opportunity to really describe to us what they would want enrichment programming to be. The students were excellent advocates for themselves in saying, I am in enrichment and we're working on science, for example, but I really love creative writing. And I'd like a chance to work with Ms. Kubik on creative writing opportunities. And then also students in the middle school saying like, we're doing more of an ELA-type enrichment programming, but I actually love math and really excited about taking algebra. And I wish I could do some type of algebra now to like prepare for high school because I'm really excited about that opportunity. And so I think your students felt very empowered to advocate for themselves. And I think they really enjoyed it and they came out and said, like, especially the older students, like, thank you for asking us what we want, which I was really impressed. And we shared that with Tony and Jane Ellen several times and included that in the body of the report. So I think they would be an excellent resource for you moving forward in figuring out how to redesign the enrichment programming.
Jane Ellen, maybe if you wanted to go through a few of your slides and then that might answer.
Yeah, I said, I do have one question, but this might be covered. And if it is, that's fine. But so I did want to ask, you had mentioned the cluster grouping model. And again, I want to go back to the fact that our small cohorts. And one of the reasons we did the regionalization, you know, the combining our grades in the same buildings was to create a larger cohort, which we thought that would be helpful. But could you, could you talk a little bit about how that could work? Given our kind of unique situation? And again, if Jane Ellen, if you were planning to cover that, I don't mean to steal your thought, so.
Yeah, a little bit. And then you, you know, you all can jump in.
Just, I'll just add a little bit to address that question as well, too. There's a whole myriad of different types of instructional models that you could be looking at, including accelerated learning. And of course, larger school districts have more resources to be able to move them around. Cluster grouping tends to work really well in small school districts because it's a quick, easy fix that you can implement pretty quickly. Doesn't require a lot of resources, except the providing professional development for the teacher who will have that cluster group so that they can better differentiate for those populations of students. Yeah.
Okay, thank you.
Can I just ask one more quick question? And again, if it's something that's covered. I'm just wondering, and this would be general, but what would be the fewest number of students that could make a program like this? Not worthwhile, but helpful, or, you know, because if you only have one or two kids, I don't know.
Two would be the minimum.
Two would be the, okay.
Yeah.
Okay.
And we even know that in, as students get into high school and we look at meeting the needs of students that have gifted abilities in high school, it's very popular to do independent studies. So if you have a student who's gifted in a theater or gifted in debate or gifted in a variety of different abilities, independent studies are very popular at the high school level. And I've also been involved at the elementary level to do independent studies as well. If it was an extremely gifted student in the top two percent of the population, and as Rob said, there wasn't a specific program or service model. So we designed some one-on-one independent studies for that person. So it's, as long as you have the staff and the professionals to support the students, then we will do anything we can. We don't want to ever say, well, we've identified them and now we don't have anything to do with them. It is our, that's why we're here, to provide those services for everyone. And again, I will invite Rob and Mark to jump in if anything that I'm presenting. What I did was just quickly, I only have about five or six slides, but I took all of the recommendations from the report and I just went and highlighted or bulleted some of the things that we've discussed based on the vision. And so meeting with the administrative team, as we heard from the report, we are first and foremost is going to be establish a district-wide gifted and talented leadership team. And on that team with a variety of stakeholders, teachers, parents, board members, and administrators, we're going to look at creating that vision because we really can't put anything into place if we don't know the why. And as it came out, there was a lot of people that don't know the why for our gifted and talented. And that's why this program review has come at such a wonderful and opportune time because we have so many different things. And it gives us that opportunity to disrupt things that we had in place that don't meet the need of now having a pre-K four, a five-eight, and a nine-twelve building. So this allows us to put those structures and systems in place with the new configurations. So it'll be important to develop a long-term plan for the district. And I'll work again with the Board of Education Curriculum and Technology Team and Committee to develop what that may look like in terms of curricular resources. I know back and forth, it's been, we've gone around and around about gifted and talented versus enrichment. Based on the New Jersey laws Rob was referring to three years ago, we may want to consider, and with the decision of the gifted and talented district-wide team, do we now want to call it a gifted and talented and not enrichment? Because we have enrichment after school, we have enrichment opportunities that don't oftentimes, don't oftentimes meet the needs or are for our gifted and talented students. So these are things, and again, no decisions have been made. Really, as I said, I took the recommendations and I said, how can we take these recommendations and make them applicable to us? Again, we're looking at a three- to five-year plan. So what are the things we need to determine first? And that is the team, the vision. And then we need to look at our board policy and the procedures for gifted and talented. So you can see what those things are, looking at the very important, the general, the very, excuse me, the various areas of giftedness. We heard that over and over again, and we want to make sure we're doing that. So we do, we have started with general intelligence, but then we need to look at academic, artistic aptitudes, and leadership abilities. And what are those things that we already might have in place? Do we, we have a student council? Do we, is that part of our gifted and talented program? Do we, um, is that part of our gifted and talented program? Because we can provide opportunities there. So we'll be not looking at, you know, every, erasing everything, but what are the things that are working well? And how can they serve our students in these different abilities? And again, if you have questions, please, please feel free to jump in at any time with any of the slides. Um, or I can take them at the end. Um, again, we're going to look at our identification practices because we're again, looking at that ten to fifteen percent. And maybe looking at those students that we can really target that gifted um, eligibility for and have that decision-making team. This team I look to be more school-based. Um, and I would be on it as well as the school administrator. And certainly our gifted and talented teacher. And then maybe there's a general education teacher. Maybe this is also where we have. One of the child study team members who can help us analyze, um, as Rob said, the data. What is, how do you read this report? Um, from a student or how do you look at our COGAT stainines and look at all those different pieces of the COGAT report? We need to look at the trends for twice exceptional and multilingual learners. Are we overlooking our multilingual learners because of a language barrier that we are perceived language barrier? Whereas if we step back and say, wait, this child speaks two languages, I think that's gifted, right? So where is it that we need to look at marrying all these different pieces? Um, and that's why multiple measures truly come into play. Um, we need to reconsider the expectations. Um, and as Rob said, you're not gifted for two hours or an hour a day, you're gifted twenty-four seven. Well, if you're gifted at seven or eight years old, pretty good chances you're still gifted at nine, ten, fourteen, fifteen, or seventeen or eighteen. So we need to look at the whole child and how our perception of that child. And what their true portfolio is moving forward as they move through the different grades. Um, and we need to expand the use of our screening tools and assessment profiles. And this is Gina, exactly what I was talking about, about a profile or a portfolio where that's very common with looking at artistic ability. We might have the art teachers from the middle and the high school, as well as the art teacher at the elementary school. And sit together and identify, you know, what do they see in art? Where, what's the progression to an AP art class? And so what do we see in our elementary students that would get them there? The same thing with musical ability. I could see. Our music teachers at the middle and high school, all part of a committee. We're small enough, which is wonderful because we can have a, a team of five people to help identify. Our gifted and talented. Um, we don't have to have multiple people who don't even know the district and how wonderful it is and they know each other. Um, so we need to look at that. We need to look again at the COGAT. Um, we need to refine some of our evaluation. Um, I want to make sure that parents know how to read a COGAT. What does the score report tell us? Um, Ms. Kuvak and I were even talking today about letting students know. Where is my giftedness? When I could identify that non-verbal and the paper folding and the dots. What did that tell me about my learning? And so we need to make sure that not, and the teachers know as well. So we have planned to put the COGAT scores and students' individual reports as part of our school-wide data meetings. So if we're talking about looking at students and the needs, we may have concerns about standards with support. Well, have we looked at their COGAT score? Because if we see a high above-average COGAT score in the verbal reasoning. But yet we're seeing them have some difficulty with decoding words or comprehending. What is it that we're missing? Because one multiple, and that's why we have multiple measures. One measure tells us this, something else is telling us that. So we need to dive deeper. Um, so looking at that, um, looking at the divergent thinking, oftentimes. We refer to gifted and talented students as divergent thinkers. They're looking at thinking at a very different pathway. And how are we allowing that thinking in our classroom? Not that it's always one way, not that you have to get color this way, that have to have this, you have to have that. But are we open with our rubrics and understanding that is it, does it matter what color um, Asia is when we're coloring a map? No, it doesn't. What is it that we really need people to know or students to know about Asia? Um, and consider some non-verbal screening tools for our multilingual learners. Again, we need to work on our family stakeholder engagement and as Ms. Hartigan always presents in our meetings. There's a lot of engagement from our PTO, PTA, and now coming together as a district, as well as our LAEF. So how can we all work together to bring our community involved in um, into our schools? How can we bring artists, artists in to help us with the portfolios, musicians? So all of that different extensions. How can we bring that culture and climate that is in our West Amwell, as well as our Lamberville communities into our schools? And help us with identifying students. And then lastly, this is really where we're getting into the systems and the structures. So providing professional development for our stakeholders and professional development. We know that teachers know what um, what a gifted child may be. But do they know how it presents itself to the student in the classroom, that child that can't sit still, the child that does, that always wants to stand, the child that is always out of their seat? Or doesn't seem to be paying attention? What are we missing here? So understanding and in the last page of the report, there's some information about the myths of gifted students. And as Rob talked about, you know, I always call them school smart. What is the difference between our school smart kids and our truly gifted kids? We have a lot of kids that do school well, they'll sit, they'll perform, they'll answer questions, they'll follow the rules. Are they gifted or are they school smart? And that's okay. We just need to be able to identify where they are. We also, um, in many of my years of teaching the gifted and talented students. The truly gifted students were the messy learners. They were the ones whose parents I was meeting with constantly to say, I just don't understand. You know, they, they score, they have these scores, but. This child can't follow directions or is talking back or has a lot of social reactions. Well, oftentimes, as Rob said, that social emotional piece is really important. So we need to educate parents. And teachers as well as administrators that were all on this team. And what can we learn from the student and their behaviors? Because oftentimes behavior is just communication. What are they trying to tell us? Um, again, planning some opportunities for training to include identification. I would like um, to have with our new website, I want there to be a complete webpage devoted to gifted and talented. The identification process, how to read a COGAT, um, all different aspects. The portfolio, what the portfolio process looks like. So it's very easy for any family member to say. Well, you've shown me this interest in art, maybe there's some type of program or what else can we provide at the schools? And it's all right there. So that communication piece is very important. Um, and then developing a gifted and talented policy or procedures manual, very similar to the MTSS. Um, manual that came out of the special education review. So how are we going to put those things together? And again, these are just the first steps in a three to five-year plan. Um, and obviously look at supporting um, gifted and talented in each one of our school buildings. As we transition to the three different buildings. Um, and then so I spoke very quickly, um, because I know we've been here, we've heard a lot about our gifted and talented. Um, program review, but I do want to be able to open this up to any questions you may have. Um, and Maury and Rob can jump in as well.
The last thing I'll just mention too quickly is that, you know, you heard last month when we presented the schedule that we're going to that accelerate block. Has a lot of opportunity for the clustering of students there. Right now with our two pools. Kids don't have common time um, within their schedules to get together, but now that we'll have, you know, an accelerate block. Pretty much in the elementary school and in the five, six next year. Um, it will provide a time every day where those kids could come together and not miss another class in order to be able to come together.
And that really is the beautiful thing about the accelerate block. So those students will have cluster grouping, as Rob had mentioned. Five days a week, um, they may be in band, which also may be, so it only may be four days a week. But just as I've talked to you about what that looks like for intervention services, it's the same for our gifted and talented. The one other thing I do want to share is um, to talk about the homogenious grouping in our classes. The reason we've chosen the curricular programs and the structures and the things that we've chosen moving forward is because they allow for small group instruction. I know when I came to the district, small group instruction, blended learning, all of those differentiation techniques, all support learners. So that the gifted and talented students or the high-performing math students can be in a math group together. After the teacher has presented the seven to twenty-minute, um. The objective for the math lesson, then students that are like-minded can go solve problems together. And we do that because as Rob said, those students need to grow off of each other. Maybe that's a book club. Maybe in the reading or maybe it's, um, there's all different types of math Olympiads, which are really multi-step problem solving. Which then could be part of our reveal math class. So when we are creating and choosing our curricular programs. We're making sure, we're very careful that they meet the needs of all of our students. So I could stand up here and tell you about wit and wisdom and that. How it provides the support needed for our multilingual learners, for our special education, for our standards with support and for our gifted. Um, they, those are the goals of choosing programs. And that's why it's very important we choose the right kind of program for South Hundredan.
One really cool thing to say, um, throwing it out. So for anyone who is in PR and at the radio, we don't need to be very wild. When they show off their politics, it's all about politics. They have actually excellent shows, they, all the media did no longer feel like, yes, in which they were interviewing. Times you adults, I have a death by the death of a child and. Whatever he does, he can do everything. It's what I'm using this action, so many of us have. It's like, if I deal with you, you know, maybe just to, everything. I'll go in for a now and then.
So I know we, we're talking a lot about things that we can do in the next three to five years, but um, just kind of. Want to focus a little bit on the, the year or two ahead of us, um, as we transition. And I, I was just looking at our website. And our current enrichment referral checklist actually has COGAT. The Ranzilli scale and also the NJ SLA math and ELA test scores. And we haven't talked at all about having that factored in. Um, is that all going to continue to be an relevant piece?
No, not at all. Um, and the reason why the website has not been changed or we have not talked about, you know, what are the next steps for next month? Is because we were waiting for the program review. And so we've, we meet uh, twice a month. Um, and so we've been talking about the findings they've had. We've talked about what are our next steps. Um, we've talked about how to put this in place, starting pretty quickly. And that's what the two action steps um, would come from. Moving forward, we will not use the NJ SLA um, as part of our identification.
And when we, we've talked a couple of times about, and it comes up, I think in a lot of different ways, small group instruction. And when I look at like my current fourth graders class size, that I think is only like twelve. So, you know. I guess I'm, I'm wondering if, are we, it sounds like we're moving in a direction that it's, seems like. It makes sense to have a few more kids together so that you don't have a lot, you're like, on your ends, you might have groups of two and three. Or, you know what I mean? Like, so does it make sense to look at our class sizes, um? Again, to, to implement a lot of this stuff to make sure that we have groups. As often as we can and not a single or a pair, right?
Um, we'll be able to make it work with twelve, certainly. Um, class size will be something that the board um, will discuss. Um, but you, anytime a twelve, a student, a class of twelve, with, anytime you meet with a teacher. Anytime you can meet one-on-one, anytime you can, um, there's lots of different configurations and. Students in elementary school, middle school and high school, we move around a lot. So you're not with two students for eighty minutes or you're not with a teacher. So there's a lot of movement. Sometimes it's independent work, some. And there's four people working independently. Sometimes there's two working in part pairs or pairs and three working with the teacher. So, and it all just is very fluid. Um, so I think twelve is a blessing, um, and we are so lucky. But if the board moves in a different direction, um, we can make whatever structure and whatever class size we have work.
I also want to point out that because we're bringing all of the grades together.
Yeah.
And we have this, this period of time that's dedicated the accelerate or the flex. That that allows the kids to.
Yes, right.
Join other classes.
Right. So I foresee our, you know, third, fourth and fifth graders, or excuse me, third and fourth graders, um, going to accelerate together for gifted. Um, they would be in their classroom for the other core content, but during um, accelerate, they're moving all over the building, very similar to flex at the high school. So um, obviously we have one teacher, but one teacher could certainly meet the needs in accelerate with third, fourth. Um, second, third, and maybe another day is first and second. So absolutely, certainly. And as much as students like homogenious grouping, that does not necessarily mean grade level. It's the homogeneously grouped um, with a second and third grader. Um, many schools have models called a multi-age classroom when it's first and second together. Um, and you can, you can be gifted in second grade and meeting your needs and working with a partner who's in third grade. And you're still having the same cognitive um, intellectual exchange.
So when you're talking about that, that. And that's the accelerate.
Yes.
So is that similar to what you guys were talking about with this, the school-wide enrichment model? That's the.
Yes.
Okay. So and that model is not, it doesn't have to be on its own. It could be done in conjunction with like cluster.
Yes, oftentimes. Tier one, tier what, school-wide is the entire school and then cluster grouping is almost like a tiered support, right? So you have what's good for tier one and for the whole class, providing those. And then you have specific clusters or specific interventions or um, extensions. So oftentimes assemblies that come and do architecture are considered part of a school-wide program. Because everybody is benefiting from architecture assembly and building things and making things. Whereas then you might have your gifted and talented students take it off and build a bridge, right? And they're accelerate because they were just so enamored and so awed by what this means. And now you've got future engineers in front of you. So it's really looking at exposing and providing the best possible um. Opportunities for students and then narrowing, just like we do with everything else. We don't want to just fire hose out there. Because somebody might be artistic and have really, you know, no interest right now in solving math problems with. You know, multi-digit multiplication or something.
It sounds like we might be in a good position right now.
We are.
For, and imagine some of these instead of three to five years.
Oh, yes, 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 absolutely. Yes, yes, yes. And that's all part of the design. When we went and looked at new schedules. We looked at building accelerate in knowing that we need to meet the needs of our gifted and talented students.
I was going to say that, like, it, there's been a lot of work that is almost, if you will, building the infrastructure around.
Yes.
Exactly what's recommended. We're calling it something different. We've been calling it small group instruction. And there's been so much professional development around that, that the teachers are really getting good at that. Um. And so this is just another opportunity for that. There's also the, um, I look forward to seeing how we'll work this into the strategic plan. Because if we're saying that we need to get more community engagement, then we would want to have, you know, those eight different areas and really identify. One of the things we said we wanted is more mentorship programs. So it, it fits nicely in there and we can, it informs the, the process of we're identifying people.
Yep.
Um, so it's, it's, it, it matches quite nicely.
Any other questions?
So I just want to thank Maury and Rob. Um, you know, we'll continue off and see our relationship, but they've been amazing. Um, you know, Maury was great when we did the special ed review and then, you know, just throughout the whole process, keeping us on task, organized. Our deadlines. So, uh, you know, I want to thank you for your, your work. It's had, it will have a huge impact on us moving forward.
Thank you. We, we actually wanted to do the same and um, just it, this is a bittersweet moment for us because this wraps up. To almost two whole years of engagement with South Hundredan. And so. Seeing Julie retiring tonight when we worked so closely when she was here for the comprehensive special review. And then James tonight and then principal, I mean, we're seeing everyone and, and you know, spent two years with Tony and, and it was been, it's been wonderful. Um, we have. On behalf of PCG and on behalf of Rob and myself, we have thoroughly enjoyed all of our work here in South Hundredan. And we hope to stay close with you in the future. Please always reach out if you have questions, if we can help. Um, we're always here to, to be your partner. Um, we thoroughly enjoyed all this work. Thank you so much for the opportunities.
Thank you. Thank you very much for coming. You came a long way too. Rob, I believe flew in from Denver, right? So, and then Mary drove up from Baltimore. So they, they came a long way.
So, and then Mary drove up from Baltimore. So they, they came a long way to be with us tonight. So we really appreciate you being here. Take care. Have a, have a great night. Safe travels home.
All right. So I just, I know we've been slide decked. You know, so that, like, I'll just quickly, just wanted to share a few things. Um, just in my update, mainly construction related, um, so just wanted to share some of the latest and greatest. So our flooring is being installed in all the classrooms. This is our new art room, you can see, which is pretty cool, the way it's coming out. The nice thing about the floors that we're um, putting in our building, sustainability, environmental life, no wax. So we don't have to strip, we don't have to re-wax every summer. We just have to use soap and water and they're good to go. So we're really excited how that's coming out. This is pretty much the floors throughout the building, um, in our classrooms. Lighting and ceiling top, we're going to install in our classrooms. You can see the look of the ceiling tiles. You can see the type of lighting that we're using, all of the LED that we're really excited about. Um, acoustic panels installed in our new music room. So that's coming together. Um, if you've driven by late, you've probably noticed new concrete sidewalks that are being put in throughout the building. So that's an ongoing process. Um, and also just to make you aware, so right now it's covered in the plastic, other than the piece right out in front. But we did do, and it looks a little different, we did do pervious concrete in front of the buildings. What that means is underneath the area that you see with the um, the black tarp, the black plastic, there's all drainage underneath. There's piping that goes out to stormwater. So the goal there was that when it rains, it will seep right through the concrete, not run off the concrete. And obviously that's all part of the environmental piece. So it does look a little bit different. You can see on the side here than your typical smooth concrete because it is pervious. Uh, we have a new area in the front. It's being constructed for trash and recycling pickup. So no more, um, I know the city land rail will be happy, not trying to back up that big truck down the alleyway to try to fit in there to get to the dumpster. So this area will be paved, um, but we'll be able to pull in, get it and get out very quickly. So that's under progress. Um, and really we're in the home stretch. So over the next six weeks, most of the work will be site work completed outside. They'll be finishing the rest of the concrete. Paving is going to be starting in the next couple of weeks. Uh, the flooring will continue to be installed and completed. Our estimated completion date right now is June 30th, 2024. We have confirmation of our furniture delivery and installation will start on July 1st. And our technology installation will start in July as well. So um, we're, we're still making great progress. Um, you'll see, you know, as part of the site work, um, all the landscaping and all the different things that will be done. And we've been working with uh, Lamborghini Goes Wild on what exactly is going to go out in the front of the building. We had an initial list. We sat down with them, um, thanks to Mary and Borge. And um, they gave us our blessing on some and wanted to change others, and we were able to do that just to try to incorporate native species to that area. So we're really excited about that. Um, and then remember the sycamore tree? Well, there it is. Remember we had talked about the benches, right? We had to take down that big sycamore tree, which had been there for so long. But um, this work is coming from not only our maintenance department, but also our own students here at the high school in the wood shop, when Mr. Rawl. So this is just an example. I think we're going to have probably six or eight of these. Um, that we'll have, that we'll utilize around the school and the vestibule area. There's another area too, outside the library that we think would be a good spot. So I was excited to see that. You know, this time last year, we were getting ready to take down the tree. And after, you know, the kiln process, the drying out, and now the putting together and staining, um, it's pretty exciting to see the benches come together. And then the other piece that I wanted to share, and I've shared this with some folks. Um, this is officially our new mascot for the South Hundredan Regional Elementary School. So after many designs from our students, thank you to our students, and then taking it and enhancing it a bit. Um, but it came from our student ideas, um, our middle school and our high school students. This will be the new logo that will be on the sign out front, as well as on the gym floor, um, and the gymnasium. So we're really excited about that. We're still working on the middle school one, but um, this one is firelight. So we're excited. Just a couple of things I wanted to share. So if you've been by lately, the middle school, there's a lot going on. There's a lot of masons that are on site right now. It's purely mostly a masonry building, block building. So what you're seeing is a lot of folks uh, on site and assembling that building. They've been working on the gym. Um, lately the front of the building on the left where the science classroom, the art, the music room, um, the choral room. So a lot is happening. They're making excellent progress. Um, and we'll continue hopefully now with good stretches of weather, maybe not as much rain. It will help with the building process. So I just wanted to share that. I did.
Sure. It's, what are these big tall?
These big things? Um, that's a good question. They had them up originally for like, like, yeah. No, 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 no. No, I think it's more just for the structure of like each space. Yeah. And they're working off of that as they move up the walls. Yeah, they were pretty big when I saw them too.
I think those blocks is about 30 pounds.
Yeah, they're.
If you've got a few hundred blocks on that, that's a lot of weight on that scaffold. So.
I gotta tell you, being out there at the site, I don't envy the mason's hands, seeing them and having the amount of blocks and moving. That's, that's hard work.
Although if you ever go and watch them work, it's amazing.
Oh, it is.
They can lay out.
Yeah. Quickly it goes on.
Somebody who knows what they're doing, put up a rope block.
Yup. Um, I did want to share something and just kind of highlight something from our finance agenda this evening that will be on there. So we do have a, a change order that direct, uh, address the delay claims for the middle school project. It's been submitted by um, various contractor. We've been talking about this at our finance committee over the last couple of months that we knew this was probably going to be coming. Um, just to kind of share some information of the reason why a contractor files a delay claim is when a bid on a pro, when they bid on a project, they basically calculate the materials it will cost and as well as the labor hours and cost. And it's based on the completion date. So if you recall, our original completion date for this project was July of 2024. And because we had delays of permits, the new completion date is now March 31st of 2025. So the reality is during that time, um, they're going to be here for almost an extra year. The material and the labor costs have increased. So what does that mean? Well, it means that typically we will get a change order, um. When a delay claim is submitted, vetted by our construction attorney, our architect, and our construction administrator, um, better known as Josh Balsam, because a lot of people know him by Josh now, who's been on both our sites. And they basically vet it out to determine whether it's valid and it's accurate. So the contractor has to provide justification of here's what it was originally when I bid it, and here's what the increase in price is. And a lot of times it comes down to the labor rates. So if you look at the change order, it's actually on the agenda. It's quite long. You'll see the justification in there because of the labor rates that have increased for the labor, the foreman, all throughout and how that kind of plays out. Um, the delay claim that we have on the agenda tonight is, is for our masons in the amount of 99, 929. Ernest Bach, which is our general contractor, the 256. VIP concrete, um, obviously with the amazing, you know, the majority of this building is block and, and concrete. And then Arson Tile, so the tile and company that we're doing a lot of tile and work in the building. So the change order right now for the delay claim is $386,261. So that is money obviously going into the project that we didn't expect to have to pay, but because of the delays that we had, um, obviously this is where we are. So tonight, um, it's being recommended to the board to approve this change order. And then what happens is it puts that to rest. More, most importantly, with our general contractor, where you can see the highest number is right now. Um, and then with our other subcontractors as well. Now, I want to be crystal clear because the question probably is, well, what about some of our other subs that are on the job? I.e. carpentry, plumbing, HVAC, painting, electrical, et cetera. Could we receive delay claims from them as well? All right. And the answer is yes. However, now that we memorialize a completion date and it's approved by the board, it does give the board more leverage if something's submitted down the road to say, hey, you knew about this months ago that the completion date was changed, and now all of a sudden, four months in, you're going to submit a delay claim? No, wait a minute. Come on now. Why, why all of a sudden have things changed? So then it gives up the ability to go back and negotiate and kind of go back and forth. The numbers that you saw on the last slide were not the original numbers that actually came in. After some vetting by our, you know, folks that I shared on the slide, they went back to the contract that, no, this isn't making sense. I think it really needs, and then they worked through to kind of land on those numbers. So we don't know. Um, quite honestly, it's not a process where we're going to go out to all the subs and say, hey, everyone, are you going to submit a delay claim? Because you, you know what the answer is going to be. Um, it's more about a wait and see, but we positioned ourselves now because we're, you know, memorializing a new completion date to have a lot more levers as far as those negotiations go. However, Bach is the big one, right? Even all the subs that come along, depending upon what they are, it's not going to be anywhere near the amount that obviously Bach will invest in the general contract. So I just wanted to be transparent, you know, as far as that, you know, goes in that it is on the agenda this evening, you know, that we're recommending for approval that we've been talking about. All right. So I know your slide deck presented out. So we'll move on.
Just add one thing, perhaps the, the superintendent's report, and that's just the mention of a couple of student things. I don't know if you want to say anything. We just have, we just have spectacular prom on Friday.
Yes.
I don't know. If anybody went down to the Lariville station, the kids all meet there around 5:30 or 6:00 and they get their pictures taken before they go. It's great. It's great to see families. It's great to see these kids that maybe you've seen when they were, you know, little and growing up and the, the brothers and sisters and everybody else. Um, the uh, sports teams, baseball and softball are both starting their state playoffs this week. Uh, they will be playing, both of them will be playing home games. The softball team will be playing here on Wednesday. The baseball team will be playing on Thursday. I understand there's a number of track and field athletes who have qualified for the regional meet in both the running events and also the, the weight throwing events. So, you know, there's lots, still lots of things going on here at the, the elementary school student thing.
And just a side note on the prom, it was the first time I had the opportunity to see a bench in person. Somebody came going up in a bench. I was dropped off at the prom. So.
Okay. Uh, with that, we will, um, we have, uh, next up on the agenda is our period of public comment. So um, this uh, time is open for anyone to, if you've had a comment on any item on the, on the agenda, or anything that you'd like to bring before the board. We just asked that you come to the podium, tell us your name, the community that you're from, and try to keep your remarks uh, to our freedom. Uh, with that, is there any uh, anyone who would like to bring something before the board? Seen nothing of interest from the, or no one uh, in the audience. Um, do we have anyone, no one on the uh, response? So I will then uh, close this period of public comment. And we will move on with the agenda. There will be a second opportunity for public comment later in the meeting. Um, with that, we will go to our committee business. Uh, we'll start with buildings and grounds, uh, committee, uh, Ms. Warren.
Now let Andrew.
Ms. Warren is going to refer to Andrew for.
Sure. Uh, so we discussed, it's something that's determined to review the status of the elementary school construction. We can provide some pictures and updates. Uh, we also discussed the community review with the middle school project and delay claims. Uh, we discussed the upgrades necessary to high school well, or it was posted on Friday, May 17th. Bit opening for that will be May 30th. And we talked about more about pre-K and pre-3. I mean, with new contracts and highlights for contracts on the agenda, uh, or aspire, and that's for IT infrastructure. Um, Bloom, which had to do with the AV materials for the elementary school. Critical response group is part of our safety and security. Uh, Delval, it's for us maintenance. OBJ interiors goes for some work to be done on the new on the gym. I mean, home medicine, quite of our earliest. On the agenda for approval tonight. Other highlights, municipal tax levy schedule for 2425 at 40 Uval. Room transfer fund or construction payments out of the NJARM account. Resolution for, uh, to join me, to continue to be a member of the NJNSIAA. That was a yearly, um, perpunctory thing we do.
Can we join the PIAA instead? All right.
We have a resolution to accept a bid for food service management company from Noshia's Food Services. That was the beginning result from our, um, food services RFP from the previous month. Resolution to approve, um, these purchase agreement for the IT. Uh, some of that is going to be purchased through, uh, final coming called E-rate. And then the remainder of that we have some different plans and through this purchase. And then we have also the payment authorizations for construction and the NJARM account interest update is up to 2.1.
I'm sorry, can you say that again?
2.1.
Thank you for the report. So with that, um, I need a motion to approve items A through O. Don't move by Megan. Thank you for that in a second, please.
Second.
Second by Maureen. Uh, any discussion on any of those items, please?
For the um, the Bloom proposal, when it, um, there was a descriptions of the monitors that are going in. So the classrooms are, are doing the seven, the 75 inch, and those are interactive. Does that replace smartboard?
Yep.
Okay. And that's like a thing that hangs on the.
It's like a TV.
TV. And then for the other ones that are kind of like throughout the building, they're like, there's 65 inch screens and those are not interactive. Are they more like that? Yeah.
So.
Sign. Okay. Uh, because I know I saw that it were, there, there's supposed to be one, um. It says in, does it say in, yeah, in the vestibule and then also in the main?
Yeah, there's two areas. So there's, there's secure vestibule with the doors. And then when you walk through the second door, there's a whole nother section. It's kind of open. You know, a lot of walls.
Okay. All right. And then, and so those are just going to have like information up on.
Any other questions or discussion on items A through O? Just mention one point of random trivia. Uh, the administrator who is in charge of the New Jersey Interschool Athletic Athletic Association, it's a South Hundredan graduate.
That is correct.
Anyway, uh, with that, uh, let's uh, vote on these.
Senator Jennifer Bashman?
Yes.
Martha Dennis?
Yes.
Yes.
Nina Pachetti?
Yeah.
Michael Strug?
Abstain.
Megan Warner?
Yes.
Ron Calorino?
Yes.
Yes. Uh, personnel, um. We have to move items A. And Gina, Gina, would you like to make a report for me?
Sure. So, um, once and after, I'm on my team. And I'm in for myself, having a velocity, gathering water, as well as. We, uh, reviewed the different things that can be made in for credit, recommendations requirements for extended use of concerts, as well as recommendations for allowing. Initially, we reviewed the personal recommendation for active terms of excitement and guidance, for the planning of the great, for the career. We were informed of current openings and new specs. Um, we were updated on the status of the administrator negotiations, as our ongoing. Initially, we're going to do updated on the status of the bus driver salary negotiations. An MOA has been reached and is on the agenda for people tonight. And then finally, um, we should go, uh, went over the hiring process.
So with that, uh, would you like to move items A through C? Good. Don't move. Um, in a second by Megan. Thank you. Any discussion on items A through C?
The only thing I'll mention is I just wanted to say I'm really happy that we were able to come to an agreement with our bus drivers. And I thank our board negotiations team that was working over the last several months. Their current agreement doesn't end until June 30th of this year. So anytime you can finish a negotiation and settle on a new contract before the existing one, it's always a positive thing. And quite honestly, it's very uncommon in both districts. So that's a credit to the board um, and to the leadership of the bus driver association to be able to get that done. So thanks.
Appreciate those willingness to work with us. Excited to continue to work with them. Um, any other discussion on those items? And then let's go.
Martha Dennis?
Yes.
Nina Machete?
Yeah.
Michael Schraub?
Yes.
Megan Warner?
Yes.
Jennifer Bachelor?
Yes.
Ronnie Tomarino?
Yes.
Kim Gallagher?
Yes. Uh, curriculum and technology, um, Mr. Keys is not here, but I can tell you that we did meet the Tuesday before last. Um, his, uh, agenda is, or his, uh, minutes this of the meeting are posted. And basically that meeting was taken up with the discussions, the presentation and subsequent discussion of the presentation from PCG, which we saw here tonight. So, uh, there is nothing to move for curriculum and technology. Uh, so we will go to the policy committee, Mrs. Dennis.
Yes, we did not meet this past month, but we do have one item, one regulation for the second reading. That is regulation twenty-two hundred on curriculum content. Uh, just as a reminder, the only revision is to remove the list of protected categories and replace the list with the expanded list as defined under state statute. This change is mandated.
Okay. So, um, would you like to, this is, uh, so we need to move that for a second reading, is that right?
We do. Yes.
Okay. So I'll seek a motion for that to be moved on a second read. Megan, thank you. In a second for that. A second. Thank you by Gina. Have my reading guys, it's not so.
Yeah, switch back and forth.
I want to see what's going on five feet away from me. All right. Uh, this is a roll call note for this. Yes.
Megan Machete?
Yes.
Megan Warner?
Yes.
Jennifer Bachelor? Martha Dennis?
Yes.
Monty Tomarino?
Yes.
Yes. Uh, Mr. Tomarino?
So in school and community, um, Vince Sefeli presented an early draft of the website design. We talked about that last month, um, as well. Um, and we really focused on, uh, giving feedback about ease of use. Um, including that the district page really needs to be very clear as to how to access the individual pages from the others, for the other schools. Um, and some of the commonly accessed information and providing quick links for families um, on the website. So that is still in revision and it will go to the administrative team and then come back to our committee. Um, so it's still in the works. We discussed the press release for the pre-K. Um, and what we really talked about, um, was how this needed to be a focused press release. There's a lot to share about the history of the pre-K expansion and state regulations. But we decided that this press release really needed to focus on the current program and its impact on children and families. And because we'll be hosting an information session, um, to gather feedback. Um, in the fall, we may run a second press release to really try to, um, bolster community participation to help with the long range planning for the universal preschool. We also reviewed the climate survey, and this is a survey that, that we have, are now giving annually to students, parents and teachers to really understand, um, the, what we're doing well in the school and where we need to improve. Um, one of the things we noted was that it's really important that survey takers or people, when we're, when we're asking people to complete the surveys, that they get some information about how that information is used. Um, because unlike a lot of surveys that we take, um, this, this data really does drive decisions. Um, for example, when we wanted to improve the way that teachers were involved in decision-making, Tony added a superintendent teacher council. Is that what you call it?
Staff advisory.
Staff advisory council. I was like, I knew I wasn't going to get that right. Um, and then also to better understand responses to individual questions, we're looking at if we can add a text box to that. Um, so that survey is looking to go out, um, in the beginning of June. Um, and then we talked about ways that we celebrate that the district has, um, implemented celebrating student achievement. Um, what our current practices are and how we can, um, further improve upon them to really make it more meaningful for students and families. And that is it. Nothing to move.
Well, thank you. Um, we do have, um, one, uh, routine information item. We do need to accept a harassment intimidation bullying report. This is the report that we discussed last week, or last month, excuse me, during our executive session. Um, that, uh, is something that we can do by a police vote, I believe. So I will ask for someone to make a motion to accept. Megan, thank you so much. And a, and a second, please.
Second.
Second by Jen. Thank you very much. Any discussion on that? We're limited in what we can discuss in any case. Uh, so all in favor? Aye. Anyone opposed?
Aye.
Anyone abstain? Um, we did, as, as is reported here, we did, uh, schools did conduct fire and safety drills in accordance with the state regulations uh, during the past month. And so that brings us to our second period for public comments. Uh, same, same rules, parameters as the first. Uh, so I will open it to the public if anyone has anything they would like to bring before the board. Being none, I will look at the screen next to me and seeing no one is there either. I will say we will close the second period of public comment. Um, at this time, the board does have need to go into an executive session. Uh, I don't anticipate, I anticipate that taking about twenty minutes. There will be no action taken after we come out of that executive session. Don't leave the room if you're willing to stay if you'd like. Um, so we'll have, uh, uh, with that, I'll need a motion to go into the session at nine fifteen. Megan, thank you. A second?
Second.
Second, Ronnie. Thank you. All in favor?